Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council regular meeting. Today is March 8th. It's 8:10 PM. Madam Kirk, I have a call.
Mayor Cranjak?
Present.
Councilperson of Versa?
Present.
E. Park?
Present.
O.?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Superintendent of DPW?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's start our meeting as we always do with a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every intention and essence of all. Thank you. Madam Kirk, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd also like to welcome our new Borough Administrator, Catherine Navarro Steiner. Catherine started on Monday. She's three weeks in already. She joined us during Budget Week. So it's been a lot of work, and we appreciate your joining us and working with us. If anyone needs to speak with Catherine, she's at Borough Hall every day. Okay. Welcome.
I'd like to make a statement. I'm actually embarrassed and kind of upset at myself, and I actually want to apologize to the residents of Englewood Cliffs because I just recently realized that I and Bill Wu and Carol McMorro and Mayor Cranjak is actually in violation of the Sunshine Law. And the reason why I say this is because I didn't realize at the time, but when we were interviewing Mrs. Navarro, that we were, the four of us, were together during that hiring process. So I have a question for the Borough Attorney. I don't know what we should do to remedy this, or if, you know, I've never, this is new to me. I don't, you know, I didn't know that at the time.
Well, certainly, to say that you were in violation of the Open Public Meetings Law is probably overstating. The Open Public Meetings Law is, prevents meetings where action is taken. And the action of, for example, of retaining, of hiring Ms. Navarro Steiner was taken in an open public meeting under a resolution. So I'll look at the details of that, and then I will fashion a remedy if one is required. But I don't believe that that would necessarily be applicable in an interview process.
And if it was a violation, then what are we supposed, is there something that we're supposed to do, or?
Well, no, because the, when there is a violation of Open Public Meetings Act, what it means is the action that was taken in a meeting that was not public, which was required to be public, is void. So what you would have to do is to correct the mistake, is to have an open public meeting and take the action in an open public meeting. That's the remedy. In other words, if you go and approve a contract with four councilpeople sitting around the table, and there's no vote, and there's no resolution in an open meeting, let's say that was an example, okay? You can't bind the borough to what you did in that meeting. It's called void ab initio, which means void from the beginning. So the, an interview process probably doesn't fall under a violation of Open Public Meetings. Of course, as the Borough Attorney, I do recommend that meetings between councilpersons be limited to, first of all, should not occur on a regular basis or under circumstances that may raise a concern. You should always consult with the Borough Attorney if something like that is happening. But for example, advisory committees are allowed to meet, and that's not a violation of an Open Public Meeting Act. Because you're going to, you're consulting for an advisory that you would presumably give for action at the public meeting. So this is very similar, it sounds very similar to me. But I will go ahead and look at, look at that and see if there is an issue there.
I also have a question for the Borough-
Well, when I subject it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just to let you know, I was walking in and out of the room to get copies, so there was that in and out as well. And we did meet first with Catherine, and then the meeting first started with the three of us. I just want you to know all the details.
Yeah, if I might. This is not something that we need to discuss.
Okay, well, Councilwoman Park felt the need to discuss it.
Right. So I will-
I'm a gentleman, I keep telling you, I'm doing things very properly.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, I don't want to do anything that is perceived to be even inappropriate.
We all agree. We all agree.
We all agree, and certainly would I, it is my obligation to follow up on it, and I will do so as necessary. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Did you get me?
Yeah.
Because I'm usually loud, so.
Okay.
I will, I will look into this. I will receive, I will get details. I will speak to each of you separately, and then we will take action if necessary. I don't think there's going to be any violation, and I don't think there will be any need for remedy. All of us had a closed session with respect to the candidates, and then we went into open public session and voted a resolution. So I think you're fine.
The second thing also is that I recently found out, well, I guess I have a question for the Borough Clerk. If a resident sends in a letter to the mayor and council, shouldn't the council, all the council members also receive that letter?
If it comes to my attention, but if-
So apparently, there was a letter from the residents of Van Noeschen to the mayor and council regarding the LG construction, which was apparently sent sometime last week, and I think Mayor Cranjak met with them today. And, you know, again, this goes to, my point is that why do I need to find out from other people? Shouldn't I know as councilperson that you didn't have a meeting today?
Shouldn't we all know? Well, as the mayor, the residents contacted me.
No, the letter said mayor and council.
If they wanted to contact you, they would have contacted you. I'm not your secretary. I got a letter.
Okay, so who, I'm sorry, who received the letter?
Let me finish talking. Let me finish talking. You're very fired up tonight, and I like that.
Yes, because-
I like that. I wish I could see more of that, the budget meetings, too.
Great. What do you mean? I'm there, not you.
Let's do this, guys.
Your white phone.
The residents of Van Noeschen had some concerns regarding the construction site and the adjoining property which LG is working on. They had seven points, and we reviewed those today with LG, and I think we resolved just about all of them.
So why wasn't that notice to us? Why, why am I finding that out today from a resident of Van Noeschen?
Well, because I'm the mayor, and I took care of the problem. Because they contacted me.
As I said before, it's not a dictatorship.
They contacted me.
It's said mayor and council. I expect to get the letter also.
Well, quite frankly, they contacted me.
Well, you know what? Can I ask a question to this council? Can I, can I ask a question? Did anyone else on this council get a copy of that letter? Bill, Mr. Park, and council president, did you get a copy of this letter? No.
There wasn't a letter, there was an email from one person to me. And I assumed that if they wanted to contact you-
Was it addressed to you or mayor and council?
I don't remember. It was addressed to me, and I dealt with it.
So you conveniently don't remember?
Now, I could also tell you, because this is the positive thing here, is that those residents were delighted that within less than one week, we had the heads of LG, their construction company, their engineering firm, all assembled in a, in a meeting that they were all entitled to attend. And they did so today for two hours.
And that's great.
Lee, you're the only one who sent the letter. Nobody else got it, so it's not worth it.
Well, listen, if you guys want to make a piñata out of me, that's fine, but I helped the residents, and you're just trying to help yourself.
You have to, you have to follow the proper procedure, Mayor. You can't just do it-
Inside voices, inside voices.
All right, if I might-
Same stuff, every month it's the same stuff.
That's right.
Get any information, Mayor. I'd like if you just give us some information.
You're not entitled to that information, sir.
I'm not entitled to that information. Would it surprise you if I had a handle?
The people who voted elect to me up here are not entitled for me to make a decision on what you want.
It was addressed to me.
It was, really? Okay, I'd like a copy of that letter.
It was addressed to me.
Or email.
And just for the record, I don't think I've ever seen Mr. Versa at Borough Hall.
But, I mean, can we, can I tell you something? I, I, I just got to say something here. We just sat at that caucus, and I just told you something, all right, regarding our budget that I find extremely serious. And I didn't get a copy of the, of the e-letter, email, whatever it is. But whatever the subject is, Councilwoman Park, I'm really disappointed.
I'm not sorry.
Excuse me, I said Councilwoman Park. I'm just, what, what's going on here? Why are you so, let me please speak for a second. You're so fired up. You're so, you're so argumentative. If you want to ask the question, say it nicely. This is an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment.
It's an embarrassment.
I didn't get it either, but if I'm going to ask, I don't have to ask it that way.
We've been asking for months now.
Excuse me.
All right, yeah, let me, let me just straighten this up. The email was addressed only to me. I'm looking at it right now. So wherever you're getting your information, if they're out there, your information is not good. It was addressed to me, okay, as the mayor. I am the mayor. He's the former mayor over there. He's not used to that. He still thinks he's the mayor sometimes. It was addressed to me, and I dealt with it. Okay? And I dealt with it. Okay? So if you want to have something addressed to you-
When the resident comes up to me and says, "Oh, are you aware of what's happening on Van Noeschen? We're unhappy with the noise." And I say, "Well, I don't know, because this isn't used to me."
Of course you don't know.
Right.
Because they contacted me.
Do you think that's okay?
Of course it is.
No, but he's going to give an update during the meeting. We didn't, we didn't-
He didn't give an update today when we were in caucus or here.
He'll do it during his committee report here. Give him a chance.
I'm here to, I, I'm here to work with you, Carol.
Let me ask you a question.
I'm not, but I'm upset that you're yelling.
Because I'm upset.
All right, this is just nonsense.
This is not productive. Let's move on.
Not productive.
All right, so the letter, just for the record, everybody, listen up, it was addressed only to me, and I dealt with it. Okay?
We'd like to see a copy.
All right, let's move on.
I'm sure he'll-
If you could give an update later on, during the meeting reports.
That's fine, I'm sure.
If you could give an update to all of us, it would be most helpful.
That's fine. It's not a problem. Pick a better issue, that's hack us on, guys. That's not a good one. It's a loser.
If we could move on, please.
Okay, so now on our agenda, unless Ms. Park has anything else to say or done about, can we move on? You ready?
Sure.
Okay, let's move on.
I hope we don't have the discussion again next month when we're missing information again.
You're not missing any information, because it wasn't information intended for you. I think as an attorney, you could appreciate things that are being addressed to you and to me. Right? Unless you change your name to Mario, you're not the Mario.
Okay.
Okay. So we're at the point where we have minutes to approve. We have closed session minutes of November 10, 2016, closed session minutes of December 29, 2016, special meeting minutes of February 22, 2017, and closed session minutes of February 22, 2017. Have a motion to approve those?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I need to take the first two separately because certain persons are recusing.
Okay, let's-
So if I might call for the motion for you on the November 10 closed session minutes, I will note that in item seven, Councilwoman O. was recused, and in item nine, Councilwoman, Council President McMorro was recused. Neither of those councilpersons were present for the discussions on those particular items. So when the vote is taken, I would ask each of you to please vote whichever on all of the remaining and recuse from those particular items. So Madam Kirk, can you call for the motion on the November 10 minutes?
Okay. Do I need someone to move it?
Someone. Am I allowed to move that, because it's too-
Someone else move it.
Someone else move. Someone move.
I'm sorry, who's that, who?
Councilwoman Wu.
Well, Wu wasn't, okay.
He can't move it.
Can he move it if he wants to?
He wasn't present.
He can't.
Great, he wasn't, okay.
He wasn't, he wasn't around.
All right, so-
I would prefer someone move it who's going to vote on.
Eddie.
Are we talking about, are we, November 10?
Yes, November 10, 2016.
Yes. Yes.
So I need a second. Fantastic. Okay. Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Abstained.
Thank you. O.?
Yes, with exception of item number seven.
Which you are recused upon.
Yes. Which I was recused upon.
Thank you.
McMorro?
Yes, and recused from item nine.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Abstained.
Thank you. The next one is December 29, 2016. I need a motion and a second.
Closed again?
Yes.
I'll move that.
Second.
And just as a reminder, Councilwoman Navarro recused herself from that meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll call her. Okay. Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Abstained.
Yes, abstained.
Yes.
O.? McMorro?
Recused.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Abstained.
Okay. And we could do the next two together?
I believe that everyone was present and no one recused. That could be one motion.
Okay. I need a motion for minutes, special meeting and closed session of February 22, 2017.
Which was the one where you gave, added something on the end? I didn't read it, so I, I'm abstaining from this.
You already voted.
Yeah.
Oh, on 22nd? I thought that was.
It was on the November 10 one.
Oh, no, I thought she, she said she added something February.
November 10.
No, I knew that one. I thought you added something February. I didn't read any additions, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move that.
Of Versa. Okay, and I need a second.
Second.
Wu. Okay. Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
We're doing it 22nd, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I screwed it up.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Yeah, pass me here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to claims.
Mayor, point of order, before I move the claims, I have to ask Mr. Duffy to send four emails out to the councilmembers to come out and sign vouchers. I have done this every month this year, and while I understand that the councilmembers, certain councilmembers are, I'm just upset about certain things, they must remember their fiduciary duty to come and sign bills because employees cannot get paid, and we can't do borrow business if the vouchers aren't signed. So I hope that in equal, I don't have to send four requests out for you to come and sign vouchers. All right, please, I'm asking this.
Is there any way we can get in here, like, at night or something? Is that possible, or not, not wise?
The vouchers-
We don't have keys.
That's on me, is there any?
And there are vouchers in, they have to be. If we, if we can make, if I can possibly say something, vouchers will be ready every Monday before the meeting.
Actually, we're Friday the one month.
Right, but, right, we're, just to get-
We're shooting for Friday.
Okay.
But if, if, I'm just saying, it's a little tough for me to get even, just barely make the, you know, estimate that it's been late, too, and I apologize to this council for being late, but personally, it's a little difficult, so that's why I'm asking, is there any, any way, any vouchers could be signed later, or?
It has to be with it. Well, when someone's there, only because they're vouchers. So moving forward, the vouchers will be made available to everyone on the Friday before the meeting.
That would help. I did call-
She did.
The department three times, nobody picked up. So finally, I did call the clerk and, you know, make sure that the vouchers were signed.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think it was-
It's a pardon for one of us.
I think it was three emails, not four, but.
Well, I should have the email.
Anyway, yeah. Well, I did, I did call, and, you know.
So, okay. That being said, Mayor, I have reviewed the claims February 9 through March 8, and I make a motion to move that they be paid.
Does she have a second?
Second.
Welcome.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
So move.
If anyone from the public wishes to be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Jack Shen, 66 Village Place. Thanks, Mayor and Council for here, for the community. I would like to talk about a problem, traffic problem at Village Place. So what happens a lot is that the left turn traffic that's going on from Sullivan and through the Plaza Avenue sometimes takes Village Place as a shortcut to avoid the left turn traffic. And this situation became actually worse after this traffic divider was set up right before, what, right before the land, the left turn and, and the stray land kind of separate. So what happens now is sometimes the left turn traffic will be blocked by the, even the left turn signal screen is being blocked by the, the going straight traffic. So they, they, instead they take the Village Place as a shortcut. And there's a little sign, and it's kind of faded, which is being refurbished, which allows for traffic. Englewood Cliffs residents only, and, you know, Englewood Cliffs Police Department. But I, I don't, I'm not sure even after that sign being refurbished, how, you know, how many people are in that traffic sign. And it's now, in addition to the addition, to the traffic, you know, a lot of people are taking advantage of this shortcut, are using, are speeding and, you know, doing like 40, 50 miles an hour, and the traffic also goes both ways. So I, I think one of the root causes is because the green light on the stomach is actually been given a pretty long time with the, the traffic that it has. And so when, when people make a right onto the stomach, then it's, it almost seems like, you know, there's no car waiting there for, 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 for the red light. So I'm just wondering whether that, if there can be a traffic stop done, so to, to avoid people using, you know, Village Place or, you know, New Street or any of these streets as a shortcut, and in both directions, to bypass the line at Plaza Avenue.
Thank you. Did you send a letter last week on this, or was it another?
No, no, it wasn't.
I received the resident's letter-
Okay.
With the same issues, pretty much. I think there was a few more. And we, I referred that on to the chief, and to Mark Neville also, and they're refurbishing that sign, as you mentioned. They're doing some other things also.
Okay, great. That's great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard?
I attended the budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, and I still feel like I didn't get my questions answered. I had asked a few professionals, because I've asked this question to this council regarding $295,000, and I was told that we depend on the professionals. At that workshop, the professionals basically did not answer the question, and I'm still asking, why wasn't the $295,000 in the budget last year when the checks were paid prior to the budget being approved? And I don't understand why, if the professionals knew about it, and Chris knew about it, because he made it clear that he knew about it, how we can depend on our professionals if they're not going to make sure that all of you do the right thing by the borough? Because you're not all accountants, all in finance, so I don't expect you all to know exactly 100% what to do. But we're paying them, and they're the professionals, and they're saying that they told you that it needs to be in the budget, and it didn't wind up in the budget. And that's not okay. And that scares me, that we depend on professionals who basically are not giving us the proper information as far as the taxes are concerned. So again, I'm asking as a council, we're all sat there at that budget meeting, what happened to the $295,000? And if we have this great surplus, which I'm very happy about, why did we borrow to pay the $295,000? Why did we use a surplus? Can anybody answer me?
I think, given I'm working on the budget, I'm going to respond. I know you're not going to like the answer, but I'm going to respond with the facts that we have. They are our professionals, just like the council before us relied on, I'm going to assume and hope on whatever the professionals told them. Defying or taking a special emergency is not something different than any other town in, in New Jersey does. And as the former mayor sitting behind you will tell you, he repeated it hugely.
Who are you trying to keep it to? You're not going to be able to. We keep telling you what previous administration did.
You need to stop. Okay? That doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is what these professionals did. I spoke to the professionals, okay? I can tell you- Do you want an answer? You don't want an answer. That they said you knew about it and didn't put it in the budget. I'm not going to answer, or, or, or affect, not, not just, I'm not going to answer to what he said.
Please answer my question.
I'm trying to, but you interrupt me every second, and this is, you're-
I want to hear about the $295,000.
You're standing there for public comment, right? It's public comment. This is, we're not on trial up here. We can answer your question.
No, I'm just trying to answer.
But I'm trying to answer, and you're just repeatedly interrupting me.
Tell me how, tell me.
And if I'm going to give analogy, if I'm going to...
Tell me how hard the previous administration was and then give me my answer, please.
I know you want to be political. I know we're in March and we're waiting for this next month.
I'm not political. I am so political.
And you need to stop. I'm sorry, okay? That's why...
I have no Gen Z here.
Oh, please.
We didn't hide it from the public.
That's true. Okay. Can I ask?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And as I said before, you may not like the answer, but I'm going to give you the facts that we know. And we spoke to the auditor and we spoke to the CFO. And what we were told is that what was done is the same thing that's done in all other towns and throughout the state of New Jersey, just like the prior administrations did in doing the special emergency appropriations for terminal leave every single year. They knew those individuals were retiring, yet they did not put the money in the budget and they did a special emergency appropriation at the end of the year. I would be very upset about that also. I find it very interesting why you're harking only on that one issue and not concerned why any of the, excuse me, why any of the professionals didn't advise any of the prior councils either? If, if, why aren't, why aren't you concerned about any of those items?
I'm dealing with today.
No, I'm dealing with all of them. Because those professionals...
So if you knew that, if you knew that, if you had that information, I said, and there was something going on that was not legal...
Mr. Barry, you're saying something's going on that wasn't legal. It was legal. It absolutely was legal.
I was told by your professionals...
He never said it was not legal. He did not say that. Please.
You were on the phone with me, weren't you? I spoke with Chris. I can tell you...
Oh, well, I didn't know that. I did not know that, wait a second. I did not know that residents are calling borough professionals and were incurring costs on that. I didn't know that was even allowed.
You keep getting into the picture of you depending on the professionals. I'm telling you that your professional isn't doing his job. Not that you're not doing your job.
So do you want us to...
That the professionals are doing their job. That your order...
Look, this, this has gone on every month for ten months. So you have your answer. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to be heard? You do have your answer. You, you spoke to the CFO. You have your answer, right?
No, but I don't know the answer from...
Do you want to talk about the million five that I inherited? You want to talk about that?
It was in the budget, wasn't it?
You want to talk about that? No, it wasn't actually. Bingo. You hit it on the head. It was not on the budget. It was not in the budget.
And that was okay.
But you're okay with the million five, but you're not okay with three hundred thousand?
It's not about the dollars.
All right. You have your answer. You do this every month. Okay. Keep talking. We'll, we'll listen to you.
Okay. Well, I also like to know, which is what I'm talking about, because I didn't even know that it was happening. So I sent Eddie a letter in regards to something that I'm unhappy about in this community. Can he act on that without speaking to the rest of you?
Depends what's in your letter.
Well, you just said that you acted on the residents' concern on Van Nooten Street. You're able to do that on your own?
Yeah, you know what?
He just went to a meeting. He just sent an email. He's the mayor.
I'm the mayor. I took a meeting.
I haven't seen that.
You're the mayor. Do you, do you want to be mayor?
No, I don't...
You know why you don't want to be mayor? Because you would have spent ten hours here today. That's why you don't want to be mayor, okay? I, I enjoy doing this. You know why I enjoy doing this? Because I had, I had twelve, I had twelve residents... No, no, here's why I enjoy doing this tremendously, because I had twelve residents with a quality of life issue, okay? Not with some political grandstanding of what you're doing right now. They had an actual issue, okay? And they came to me and said, can you help us solve our issue? And you know what? I did.
And I think that's great.
Good, thank you.
It's clear why the whole council doesn't need to be involved in it.
They do not need to be involved in it.
It has to be. The professionals, again, I'm telling you.
I rely on my council. I rely on my council. The first thing I did was sent the council a letter and asked her what I should do and I took a meeting. All right?
There's nothing...
Bingo. All right. I know it doesn't, it's not really like glamorous, it's not political, but we, we, we actually helped the residents. That's what we're here for.
Mario, I don't care about...
I know you don't, but I helped the residents.
That doesn't matter.
You're just here to help the people that you work with. I'm here to help everyone, okay? Let's get that straight. Okay? So next month when you come back with two ninety-five, we'll...
Four hundred and ninety-five thousand, this money, right?
Right? Eleven months...
Two hundred and ninety-five thousand should have been in the budget. And I'm not going to let it go. And I will talk to the professionals.
So come back next month. We welcome you to come back.
I'm going to keep talking about it.
Come on back. Bring it back. Anybody else?
Wait, just so that we're clear.
No, but this is public portion, please. Is anybody else, please?
Wait, I have a right to say something. I just want to know, you said you received an email from the resident and then you said you forwarded it to council and the council said it's okay for you to just deal with it and not give anybody else any information regarding this letter. Is that correct?
What, what do you want to know about?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Time out. I must say that...
This is public, okay. Miss, Miss Park.
Members are being addressed from what...
Miss Park, you're interrupting.
Which, no, I understand, but can I just finish?
Under, no, I'm sorry. You're interrupting the flow of the meeting. It's public portion. We will discuss this under old business or new business later on.
Okay.
Let's stick with the agenda, please.
Okay. Mr. Marunutti, you have anything to say?
Thank you.
No, no, no. I thought your hand was up.
I didn't raise my hand.
I thought your hand was up.
I think there's something wrong with the vision that you're seeing. I didn't raise my hand.
I thought you raised your hand, sir.
That's the first time I've seen you do six, seven times. That's not a joke.
You had your hand up.
I did not raise my hand. So you're going to check your breasts.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
No, no.
Mary?
I just told him to come in. You're right up, you wanted to.
Go ahead.
Right in there. Come on.
Joe Prisie, five seventy-three Fourth Street, Daniel address. Um, Ms. Mayor, I want to address the council because four times members on this council brought me up and, or as me as the mayor of the administration. And a fiduciary responsibility doesn't end with me sitting in private citizen. And I have to ask you, because I may not with accusations about the town that could hurt the town, and your number one priority is to protect the town, no matter who presently, prior or future. So I'm asking you, do we need to talk because there is some comments made which should have been stopped if it affects the town?
Which comments are you talking about, sir?
When you...
Wait, wait.
I, I'm asking the council.
Okay.
Because now I'm asking that the party...
Be clear in your statement.
No, no. I'm asking, I'm not an attorney.
That's my mistake.
I'm saying I have a, I do share a responsibility because you questioned things that happened in my administration or prior administrations. And her responsibility is to protect the town first and the citizens second.
Mr. Prisie, can, can... Mr. Prisie, what's the issue, though?
I don't know, but don't question, don't question the administration, this council, because you have a responsibility to protect the town also.
Well, thank you.
So you are now, no, you are now my council because you're the town's council.
So what, what is your question, sir?
The five issues that came up. You, every time you mention the administration, a million five, you said something, you alluded to something was wrong, correct? Did someone do that?
Yeah. Alluded to something was wrong? No. No, I'll be quite clear. I know what he's, I know I have an issue with this. I can, I can speak quite clearly to him.
Would you please listen to your counsel?
Mr. Prisie, you're making a statement and you're grandstanding again because you have your, you have your workers who are on a staff videotaping us right now.
Because you're now affecting the town.
No, I'm not.
No, yes. Would you listen to your attorney? Please?
Mr. Prisie, what?
I have all respect for your attorney. Please listen to your attorney. We know where I'm going with this, council.
Let's put a stop to this.
Counselor, we know where I'm going. Just...
What is your question, though? We're not, we're not following your question, sir.
Your responsibility, counsel.
Can you repeat your question?
Her responsibility as the borough attorney is to protect the town first.
Was that a question or a statement?
No, it's a, a question. Yes, no.
Make it a question, Joe, come on.
What is your first responsibility?
Okay. We can answer that. What is your first responsibility?
Mr. Prisie, pleased to meet you. This is the first time I've actually spoken this way. My duty as the borough attorney is to the borough of Englewood. I don't represent...
Englewood Cliff.
Englewood Cliff.
Welcome to our...
I don't represent you or any individual in this borough or any other town which I provide, excuse me, services to respectfully and all council members and the mayor and the council president should listen to me. Public portion does not necessarily mean that every council person has to engage with the members speaking and answering. I understand what you mean very well. I do see, as this is only my third meeting here, that there is too much give and take and cross-talking and I am disturbed by it. But it is not my job to interrupt these public officials, sir. And it is not my job to guess what people are alluding to. And it is not my job to defend this administration's act when they are accused to be wrong or your former administration when you are accused to have done something wrong. It is not my job. I will tell you and I told the, the public and the council before, it is not appropriate to act in less than a decorous way. Every single one of the council members and members of the public need to understand that. But it is not my job to impose decorum.
But your job is to say, I would recommend that you refrain from that question.
But you see, here's the thing. It happened so often that the attorney could take over and play mother hen to everyone in the room. Sir, it is not my job to do that. I expect people to ask questions appropriately and if a council member wants to respond, I expect that to be appropriate. But it is not the purpose that everyone who comes up here expects an answer that minute. A lot of council people say, thank you, and the person goes and sits down.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So I understand and I disagree also with your quote unquote fiduciary duty. You do not have a fiduciary duty to the borough of Englewood Cliff.
In my past...
Legally, legally, currently, you do not.
No, I do not. But it's actions in the past and if I was deposed or subpoenaed, I'm still your attorney. Oh, no.
I, I understand.
I'm, I'm a lawyer.
Is there a question pending?
At this moment, no.
It doesn't have to be a question. It's a question that you all should be aware of.
Then what is your statement?
heed what your borough attorney says to you. I'm agreeing with you, counselor. And don't get into saying statements about the past. Talk about the present because you talk about the past, you involve a lot, you put the town at risk.
Well, let me ask you a question. If the past affects the present, then what do you want us to do? Ignore the past?
No, you put the town at risk.
No, no. No, actually, sir, since you're here, I'll tell you who put the town at risk. You did. And I fixed it, okay? We're finished.
Okay, let me ask you. Is that a statement?
Yes.
Or is that a fact?
That is a fact.
You got proof?
We do. We had a surplus last year despite what you left me with.
No, no, no. And so I put the town at risk. You say that.
There, there will be no further back and forth. Thank you.
All I'm saying is, counselor, I understand your frustration.
She's not frustrated at all.
Yes, she is.
She's not.
No.
She actually is not.
I am merely hoping to sow a better relationship all around.
And that's fine.
I could tell you one thing, that last, last month, we had a, a special meeting on the field study. And although everyone in that room didn't agree with things that were being considered, everyone had very thoughtful questions. There were thoughtful answers. There was a thoughtful discussion. Nobody was there to grandstand. Nobody was there to politicize the event. We all got along. We all got a lot done. We haven't had any conclusions yet, but we proved to ourselves that as a borough, absent some people, we could actually have a proper meeting.
So, Mayor, that is using your words, your field.
No, that was a fact, actually. It was a fact.
Thank you.
Watch, watch the tape, sir.
I'm watching.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, we wish to hear.
Mayor, I would just like to ask the council people, when you're in the process of having a meeting, could you make sure that your microphones are on and that you have an extended toward where you're speaking out of your mouth and not this way or that way so that we can hear you, okay? Especially those of us that don't hear as well as we would like, like me. And I, I also would like to say that the caucus meeting that most of the people were not here for generally was conducted in a much better tone than this meeting tonight. And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed in Councilwoman Park and Councilwoman Versa on their outburst. And I have to also say that if a person, if the mayor receives an email directed to him and it's not a letter that says, that's addressed to the mayor and council, he can act on it. And I'm sure the previous mayor, Mayor Prisie here, would have done the same thing. And he, he met residents, Mayor Stagnetti met residents and tried to alleviate issues. And if you had to call a meeting of all the council, you have to have a notice made and all that public disclosure of the meeting taking place. If he was meeting with the residents from a street and addressed their problem, the problem was resolved, nobody should be upset about it. You should be happy about it. You should be happy that the, the, the issue was resolved to the residents' satisfaction. And the outburst that you're coming across with is unprofessional, okay? And I think better of each of you than, than that, okay? And what went on at the, at the budget discussions earlier was very professional. And you should remember that and carry it forward with the rest of the meeting, okay? And I hope it does.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. I find it really very curious that Councilwoman Versa and Councilwoman O or current and Councilwoman Park, for that matter, are concerned about not getting an email that was sent to the mayor and the mayor alone. I've never once had an email that was addressed to Mayor Prisie alone forwarded to me. And in fact, I was not aware of resident complaints. I did not know that we had a flooding problem on Mora, Mora Road until after I left the council. Very serious problem. Mayor Prisie may very well have been dealing with it, which raises its own issues since it raised serious allegations against the former engineer who was a business partner of Mayor Prisie. I note, I wrote a letter to the entire mayor and council about an issue involving my neighbor, a former Democratic councilman and Boswell Engineering. That didn't even make it on the agenda under correspondence until Councilwoman McMorro insisted. None of the council members ever indicated any concern about the fact that this letter, which had been addressed to them, and I know they all got it because I sent it all to their house, certified mail. So they all got it. They never asked about the problem, no concern at all about that. Terminal leave. Terminal leave was paid out over several years. And there is a resolution setting forth the terms under which terminal leave will be paid for each employee who retires. It's entirely possible that the borough doesn't know that an employee is going to retire at the time the budget is formulated, but they certainly know in successive years about the terminal leave obligation because it's in a resolution passed the previous year. But yet, year after year, all terminal leave was done as a special emergency. I didn't hear anybody complaining about that when that was done. Finally, I would like to address Mayor Prisie's, or former Mayor Prisie's, comments about jeopardizing the borough when things are discussed. Obviously, that's a risk, but there's another side of that. It helps the people involved avoid accountability for what they did. And I think that his advice should be taken with a large grain of salt.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Okay. Oh, yes.
Good evening, Andrew Nick out of Fifth Street, Home Street. So I hadn't been at one of these meetings, I guess, since December. Bill, it's nice to see you up here, better than when you're in the Santa Claus costume, right? Last time I saw you. So tonight, I basically had nothing better to do. I got my two nephews over with my brother, one and four, and, you know, I'm all teenage mutant ninja turtled out. So I figured I'd come here and just see what was going on. And, you know, I guess nothing really has changed, you know? I, I've sort of tried to step back from the politics a little bit, but, you know, just as taking a more, I guess, neutral side of things, it's still the same stepping back and forth. And I really wish there was a way that you guys could find some way to come together. I mean, you know, maybe it was more cordial or more professional at the past meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't there to see it, but this is worse than ever right now. And it's always, again, got you on one side, got you on the other side, you know? I'd love to come into a meeting where there was no, hey, I got you on this, or hey, I got you on that, but I don't know whether you guys can't help yourself or whether it's just in our nature to hate each other, but I have to say, as trying to get out of this politics stuff, I'm, I'm sort of disappointed in this. And I wish there was some way, you know, that you guys could find an issue that you agree on and work from there because you serve the community a lot better instead of, and I'm not picking on you, Carol, I'm just using the example of Carol, if you're not fighting with Ellen, Ellen, if you're not fighting with Bill, Mark, if you're not fighting with Ed, or if you're not fighting with Marielle, or Zed, if you're not fighting with Mark, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that the majority of the residents want to see you guys get along. And if I had to give you a grade on it, I'd say it's an F minus because you guys aren't getting along. And even if it means conducting, you know, like a social event or something like that, bring yourself together, you know? Maybe one side can be the bigger side and make the first olive branch or gesture to it, but I really want to see you guys come together for the good of the town and no more, you know, last minute quips or, you know, gotchas or things like that. And no more, you know, last-minute quips, or, you know, gotchas, or things like that. And, you know, maybe, uh, maybe we'll be a better town for it. Like I said, I don't want to, first time I've come to one of these this year, I've just been here since December, and I'm disappointed with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm being right. I have to say that I think that we're all trying to do a great job. And it's a shame that, you know, it has to be constant attacks. I'm sorry, Ellen, I don't know really what happened, but I've never seen you that way. It's my duty to just focus on attacking and not really listening. And I'm sorry about that. Nothing personal, really. The other thing is I wanted to say thank you to Mark, those people did a wonderful job. My tweet came down, and they picked it up. I didn't even have to call them. And I'm so proud you guys are on top of everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Okay, anybody else? Have a motion to close the public court?
No move.
Law favor?
All right.
Okay.
We have resolutions that the Borough Court will read, and we'll vote on them one at a time.
Mayor, would you like me to read one and then we take the vote?
Yeah, why don't we do that one?
Okay. Resolutions 2017. Fifty-five, authorized disposal of unreparable fire department equipment. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Fifty-six, authorized advertisement of summer camp personnel. Need a motion?
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Fifty-seven, authorized mayor to sign agreement with Green Light Events 5K Race Organizer. Need a motion?
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Fifty-eight, authorized payment to Glenn Luciano for a refund of sewer connection fee. Need a motion?
Can we discuss that? I'm not familiar with this.
No, I want the answer. Okay, so this was a resident that came to a council meeting.
I know who he is.
Okay, and, well, I, I had to familiarize myself. Indicated that he had been, he had applied for a demolition permit for a building and had taken the building down. And in the course of applying for a demolition permit, he was charged by the building department for connection fees for the sewer. And after researching and looking through and myself consulting with the DPW superintendent, that fee should not have been collected. So it's money that we are refunding back to him for a fee that shouldn't have been collected.
Good.
Yes.
May I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Fifty-nine, approval of medical leave. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes. Just one, one second. For the record, this is regarding police officer, as we discussed in closed session.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Jenny. Licker.
Okay. Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Sixty, approval of Demerit Avenue block party. I need a motion?
Discussion?
Yeah, this, this, just, it's the same one as last year.
Right, I remember, but last year, we discussed that we were going to have some kind of, because noise was the issue, I think. Is there, were we going to do anything about?
I didn't know there was an issue with noise. Was there?
Yeah, that was one of the complaints people had. It's a block party, I assume there's going to be noise. So the time is eleven to five, and...
It's a color party?
It's going to be same as it was last year?
Color-run party?
I have a question. Does this open to the public? The block party?
No, it's a block.
No. It's just for the residents of that block.
And their friends.
I see.
And there is a whole harmless, whole harmless agreement that was signed?
It's going to be same as last year.
Same, and...
It's supposed to be loud, and so I just want to make sure I get, you know, answer the people.
And the residents on that block signed off on a letter approving it. They were okay with it.
Well, Karen's a blocky, behind that, and it is, that's why, you know? I just want to be able to tell people, listen, there's a party coming. Get it, have a good time. Okay.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Sixty-one, appointment of fire subcode official. Need a motion?
So moved.
Woo and M Park?
Yes.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
And we're adding sixty-two, which we discussed during caucus, authorized mayor to sign agreement with community pass. We need a motion?
Let me, let me, we have to just make a bit of a record so that we can draft a resolution if necessary. The resolution, the authorizing the mayor to sign is for an agreement between the borough and a company called CapturePoint.com, a bridge with New Jersey, with a startup cost of $6,000 for the initial year, and an annual software prescription, subscription thereafter for a limited number of years, and pass-through costs that will be absorbed by the borough. The purpose of the contract is, the purpose of the services is to set up a website wherein persons who are interested in recreation or other borough activities can sign up for things, can pay for an entrance fee through this website. The fees get collected and reverted back to the borough, minus a certain percentage. All of the details, which will be reviewed in the proposed written contract and approved by the Borough Attorney's Office before the mayor will sign. That is a condition of Mayor Fran Jack signing.
Okay.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Thank you. All resolutions passed, Mayor.
You're the man of the day.
Thank you.
I'd like to open to the public with the ordinance after the Borough Court.
Okay. Ordinance seventeen oh one, public hearing. An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs, Chapter Two, entitled Administration, Section Two, entitled Police Department to add Section two dash thirteen point eight point three, entitled Fees Related to Employment in the Police Department. I need a motion to open to the public in a second.
So moved. Second.
Law favor?
Law favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're open.
Okay, is there anyone from the public wishes to be heard on seventeen dash zero one, and then a police code for testing fees?
No one's up there.
Okay.
Karen Geiger, please get me out for Inglewood Cliffs. I just want to know what the position is of the Chief of Police on these fees and whether any things go up there.
I want the answer. I worked with Chief Ciuffi, uh, Chiuffi, Ciuffi, on these fees, as well as gathering documents for other information for the hiring process that is coming to begin shortly, and with Councilperson Seventeen. These, this, the fee, he was, this fee is set as a reasonable approximation of what it costs the Borough Police Department to run, to take the application for a benefit.
Anybody else? Can we motion to close?
No move.
Okay. Law favor? Okay, ma'am, I take a, I mean, a motion. Can I have a motion to adopt the resol, the ordinance?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
For seventeen oh one, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Ead Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor, we have an ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero three, an ordinance amending ordinance twenty sixteen dash zero nine, fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salaried, appointed, and elected officials. We need to open to the public with a motion?
So moved.
Wait a minute.
What?
Isn't it for the administrator?
Well, that's the title, but you have, yeah, yeah, it's the title. But you have it.
Yes.
We need a motion to open?
So moved.
Law favor?
Second.
Law favor?
I know.
Is there anyone from the public wishes to be heard on ordinance seventeen dash zero three, immense salary ordinance for Borough Administrator and Recreation Director? Okay. I don't see anyone. So can I have a motion to close the public portion on that?
No.
Second.
Law favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
No.
Ead Park?
I'm going to have to abstain, because I don't know whether or not we might or may not be in violation, so I'm just going to abstain.
O?
I'm going to vote no, because we have not introduced our budget yet, and I don't know where the money's coming from.
McMorro?
Yes.
M Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor, we have three yeses, two no's, and abstention.
Okay.
Yeah, the passes. Yeah.
Next on the agenda are the committee reports. Maybe the easiest way to do this is, if there's any council member who has a report to give?
No, you have to go down.
I have to go down? Okay. Councilwoman Aversa?
Nothing to report.
What, what committee are you?
Lighting.
Lighting, okay. Councilwoman Park, what committee are you?
Board of Health, and nothing to report.
Councilwoman O?
Transportation, no regrets.
Okay. Have you met with anyone regarding transportation?
Uh, no, I have not. I'm assuming that things are going well, because I have not heard otherwise.
Councilwoman McMorro?
Yeah. We can go. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, to start, I've been working very closely with our new recreation director, Richard Casey. He, uh, he's absolutely incredible. How he just jumped in, looking up everything, contacting everyone, um, he just is working so hard to try and get this recreation program to be an envy of all these other towns. He's got some great recommendations. As they come in, I will be updating the council. And one of the things he got to us today was the community pass. He brought it up, he was one of the several that brought it up during his interview. And he is excited to start to utilize that to build all the programs and make them successful. So it's been a pleasure working with him thus far. I also had the pleasure of working with our new administrator for what seems like endless days since Monday. She came in, hit the ground running, and we basically went through every item of the budget, getting up to speed. For those of you that weren't here, I gave a very, very detailed report about our budget coming, what we're going to be going into on March fourteenth, which will be the budget introduction. We went through capital in detail, and I, I've gone to extensive lengths to ensure that every member of this council has all the information that I have. So as I get it, I'm giving it to you. I explained to you why you did not have the budget prep sheets today, and I gave you very detailed information, getting you up to speed about what we will be looking at when we're making our introduction next week. So I'm asking you again to please contact me with any questions, anything, recommendations. I look forward to hearing from you. I haven't heard from any of you yet. So I, I, as I explained, I assume that that doesn't, that means you don't have anything yet, but, you know, please, I would appreciate you offering me the day of the budget, because that's not going to help matters anyone we've had over the last year. So March fourteenth, Mayor, we will be introducing, and we don't have to get a public hearing date until the fourteenth.
I just want to...
March fourteenth, we're introducing the budget.
Okay.
And we will confirm to be available. We did that at the last time.
But I'll need the date at that meeting, because it has to be at a minimum ten days before adoption.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Lizette.
You're welcome.
Also, we have our Easter icon. It's coming April eighth. For those of you in the audience, I'm sure you received the yearly calendar. I put that together with Richard and Paul Duffy. All the homes received it, and he's also been working on the website, and there's a lot that he's updated on the website that we have now that we have not had before. So we are trying very hard to, to, to update things. Yesterday, Richard and I met with Jennifer Brower and Frank Patti from, from the schools in regards to our feasibility study that we gave on Johnson Avenue. It was an excellent meeting, very positive. I'm looking forward to them getting back to us, so I can update you on what their board's thoughts are. But I, I really am excited to hear what they have to say, and looking forward to working with the school together to accomplish something to get, you know, jointly for the benefit of all the residents. And I'm going to let Councilwoman McMorro have a meeting today for PVA, I'll let him update on that, and I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of Police Committee, I think we had a good meeting last week with the Chief to discuss operational under overtime as far as new hires. Today, I was with the Police Committee, Mike Park, Carol McFarrell, myself.
No, it's not.
With Chief Chaff, Chief Chaff.
Oh, no.
Today, we had a meeting with the PVA, the mayor, Council President McFarrell, myself. We discussed the potential hire of the dispatcher with the PVA. We also had two additional topics. We talked about National Day Out and Junior Police Academy. Just worked through the dates. There's some conflicts right now between summer camp and Junior Police Academy. We're trying to work that out. We should get there soon. On, on the Board of Ed, they changed the meeting time again. A little bit fortunate, the meeting is going to be at eight o'clock. The next meeting is on April third. They're going to go into closed session at six thirty PM, and so I'll give a little portion at eight o'clock. The most important thing to come out of the Board of Ed meeting was, it was a meeting between the Board of Ed President, Frank Patti, Council President McFarrell, Recreation Director Casey, Richard Casey, to talk about how we can kind of use, think about both fields and see if we can plan, you know, all the activities that's required on the field, shared use, considering the school and the way field. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we will talk about planning.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
The estimate of planning on the wall depending application, you know, carried through December because of the snowstorm. But when you want, maybe pass on the planning board of, of the plan to look at the history of the potential resorting, this is from our government budget. That's it. We just go.
Thank you very much.
I have one thing I forgot to mention. On April twenty-second, which is a Saturday, there's going to be a free reeves clinic at four E six Hudson Terrace, and there'll also be adoption available for cats and dogs on that day from Florida County Animal Shelter. So...
Thank you. Is there any old business?
One, I think. Yeah. It's a really old business actually. For attorney, I've asked, and you may not be aware, it's, I think it's been a month. I've been looking, waiting for written, I don't know what the right word is, confirmation on, written opinion on, and we have a lot of things coming up, police-oriented, and I, I had, this is not Dylan, it's nothing personal, but I would like a written opinion on what Councilwoman McMorra should be recused from, should not be recused from, to run a police matter. So if you could do that for me. It's not, you don't have to answer tonight, it's nothing else.
Well, but I do have to answer. So first of all, for the Borough Attorney to take on a, a request, an individual request, I, I generally don't do that. I do what is generated from the public meetings and what is necessary from the day-to-day work that I receive through the Borough Clerk, the Borough Administrator, the mayor. So I would feel comfortable just knowing that you're all in agreement for me to expend attorney fees. That's number one. Number two, services have to be paid for, attorney. And number two is, it is my opinion and general practice that recusal needs to be considered on a case-by-case basis, because it is very fact-sensitive. So this is something I would say in a written opinion, but I'm telling you now that the general rule of thumb is that when someone has a consideration of whether or not they have a conflict of interest, they need to consider all of the facts surrounding it while of whether or not they have a conflict of interest, they need to consider all of the facts surrounding it while making the decision. So, so, for example, Councilwoman McMorra, anything that has to do with her spouse, who was a former deputy chief in the police department, should be a recusal because she's married to him. That may be true to a certain extent, and it may not be true. It depends upon the facts. The other guiding principle for conflicts of interest and recusal is that in, ultimately, it is that individual person's decision whether to recuse or not. However, as the borough attorney, I take it very seriously that if there is any doubt about a conflict of interest, whether you have one or not, then you should err on the side of caution and recuse yourself, because that does not put the body as a whole in jeopardy. So when there is a, when you know you have a conflict, absolutely recuse yourself. When you're not certain, each one of you, and this is the first time I can say this to all of you, each one of you has the authority to reach out to me to discuss a conflict of interest that you think you might have, to discuss with me as borough attorney privately, so that you can make an informed decision, bearing in mind that I am going to come out with a decision that I hope would be correct for the body as a whole. Remember, if someone is found to have a conflict of interest later, and did not recuse during the matter in itself, it could mean that the action that was taken, wherein that person participated, needs to be reversed. So that's a serious thing. It's asking that, you know, you, your participation is challenged, but it affects the body as a whole, so it's a very serious matter. But also bear in mind that there are different conflicts of interest, the main one being that you have a personal financial interest in something. So if there is a financial result from the action that is being considered, that's the highest level of conflict that you could have. If there is a difference of opinion, that may or may not be a conflict. If someone has spoken to a newspaper person and taken a position, that doesn't necessarily mean that they need to recuse themselves if they're a member of this council, or any other body for that matter. So, so, to the point, to the point. Uh, I do not, um, think it is appropriate to opine on Councilwoman McMorra, McMorra's participation on a broad basis. I believe each situation and consideration needs to be taken on a case-by-case, fact, fact-sensitive basis.
Which is what we've been doing. Correct.
Which is what I think you have been doing. So, I can tell you that you don't have to spend any more money.
That's it.
I'm on the record, and, and...
As long as every time we're allowed to ask, it's, it's, uh...
Well, well, what we, what you do, first of all, for you individually, and I'm telling you, you don't need council approval to call me if you have a discussion about yourself, okay?
Understood.
If you have a discussion about someone else having a conflict, then I would suggest that you tell me, whether by email or in a phone call, and there will be a closed session about it, or we will have a discussion and figure out what we do. It's best to work these things out ahead of time.
Understood.
Can I, excuse me, um, nothing personal, I, I welcome the question and, and the answer, but for the record, uh, I would like to remind every member of this council that all of us in some way, shape, or form have conflicts. For example, nothing personal, Councilwoman O, but you own a title insurance company, and you represent a lot of clients, you're a public defender, you have a lot of dealings with police officers, and you could have a lot of conflicts with items as well. So, I have those same concerns for you, what your conflicts are, because we already know that you have not recused when you were supposed to. No, we're, we're speaking openly here, so we have to take it upon ourselves...
This is not political, right?
No, it's not at all. Councilwoman Zaversa opened it.
I'm bringing up what I have said for a year and a half.
But what I'm saying, we all need to take it upon ourselves if we have a question, whether it's through being a public defender, owning a title insurance company, or whatever else, we have conflicts, and we have to do what the right thing is, ask the borough attorney each time, or publicly speak about it, but I'm, I'm not the only one that has conflicts up here.
We're not saying that you're the only one, but, um, I have, I, excuse me, I have a question, uh, to the borough attorney. So it is your opinion that, um, Councilwoman, um, McMorra could be on the police committee, and she's not conflicted? I mean, we, we're talking about, what you had just, um, said before, you know, in a broader picture.
Mm-hmm.
You asked that in January.
We did, and we got it.
And we dealt with it.
But I'm asking again.
You wanna keep asking? Okay. Does anybody have any old business that benefits the borough and not their politics?
I do, I do.
Not their politics, benefit the borough. Okay, that's what I wanna hear. I wanna hear good, meaningful questions that benefit the borough, okay?
Mayor, I have a, um...
Yes, Laura.
I have a comment or a question that I'd like to also address, um, to you.
Old, old business?
Old business.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, you know, uh, today is International Women's Day. I see some of the women wearing red.
Yes, I'm wearing a red tie, everyone.
You know, maybe, maybe you could be a little nicer to, uh, some of the women on the, uh, the council here today. But anyway, okay, here's my question. Um, so back in January, when we had our rework meeting, uh, we passed a resolution number, seventeen oh one, okay? Um, we passed a resolution in January, um, a res- a resolution stating that we, uh, would have, uh, our borough councils firm representing the, uh, the borough until February twenty-eighth. Today is March eighth. Uh, what is going on with that, and, uh, are we going to be advertising for our Q? You're technically not a holdover, because holdovers are for a month. Uh, you, there was a specific date on the resolution, and it was dated, uh, February twenty-eighth, okay?
Okay, you, you're probably ignored.
Okay, and the other...
Probably ignored it, and...
Okay, one more, one more comment, while we're on the subject. So at the, um, I believe it was the January meeting, um, I had asked the borough attorney, um, on what authority the mayor, uh, was able to charge the police chief. And she had promised me that she would email me, and, you know, uh, weeks went by, I didn't hear from her, I did make a phone call to her firm, and, um, left a message, she did not call me back. At the February mayor council meeting, I had inquired her about it, and she said to me right after the closed session, "I have the information for you." When I got back, um, at my seat here, um, I got a copy of this left on my desk.
No, I gave it to you, too.
No, you gave it to me, you, you left it here, and we had a conversation afterwards. My question to the borough attorney is, um, who was this prepared for, and when was it prepared? And I don't...
What are you holding there?
I don't expect...
What, what are you holding there?
Well, I could show you what I'm holding, okay? But I'd like to know when this was, uh, prepared, and for whom it was prepared for.
Okay. The answer to your question, does the mayor have authority to sign chi- charges against the chief? The answer is, yes, he does. It's found in Borough Code, Section two point four, in NJSA forty-eight, fourteen, one eighteen, and in the cited case that I gave. That's your answer to your question. I am not going to take the bait on a piece of paper.
It's not a bait, and let me remind you something, borough attorney. You work for all of us on this council.
No, I do not. I work for the borough of...
You do not work for the council president McMorra. You work for all of us.
For the borough of Inglewood Cliffs.
When I ask you for an email, I expect an email. When I call you and leave a message, I expect a phone call back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
By, by the way, uh, there, there had been a hearing conducted, and no one objected to me signing those charges, so you're, you're out of line, councilman.
Come on.
Oh, she don't want it.
Oh, okay.
Any other old business?
Just for the borough, uh, um, point, am I supposed to...
Is that new business or old business?
Because you want.
That's new business.
Um, it's regarding the summer camp. Can you just help me out with this, Dr.?
Hold on, we're, we're not on new business.
Okay.
Right, right. So, new business, um, I had two great parts on my deck. One part was reading Great Day for Up, Dr. Seuss, at the Northwood School. That was that help set up. Uh, very attentive audience, very gracious, very nice. They're all under ten years old. We could learn a lot from them. And then the other real good point today was getting the, uh, the residents from Vanoskin together with the senior management team of LG Electronics, uh, and working through their issues. That all arose from an email that I received, uh, last Wednesday from the other residents. We, uh, we had articulated seven issues. I passed the issues on to the LG executive that same morning. By the afternoon, some of the issues were resolved. I asked if we wanted to have a meeting, uh, as soon as possible, and, and today was the meeting. So we, we, we pretty much did what our residents expect us to do, what expect me to do, is to act immediately on, on issues, especially those that quality of life. And, um, I must say that everyone, uh, in that room, we're, everybody was trying to find a constructive solution to a construction problem. There's dust, there's noise, there's pollution. It's all the things that you would expect, and, you know, it, it just can't be helped. The outcome's gonna be a beautiful, uh, building, you know, probably the nicest office building in New Jersey, certainly the nicest town in New Jersey. I have to say, the best town in New Jersey. Um, so, so that's, that's what we do. We, we don't, we don't politicize this stuff, we just do it, okay? And I encourage the council people as well. If you get something that you could help somebody with, don't, don't raise it on the flag and say, this is, you know, just get lawn signs and deal with this. Just go out and fix the problem. You don't need to tell everyone you're doing it. If they should brought it up, I will. Okay. And then we have a summer camp, and that's gonna speak to that.
We dressed up with that, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, it's okay?
Yeah, we're done. Any other new business that will benefit the borough? Okay. Have a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn?
Wait, hold on.
Before we adjourn, um, can I get my piece of paper back from your borough attorney?
No. It's mine, paper.
Why? How is that yours? You gave it to me at the last meeting.
Because I gave it to you, and you handed it back to me.
No, I did not.
Obviously.
No, I gave it to the mayor, borough attorney.
I will respond to your email.
Okay.
I gave to the mayor, not you.
I will provide my opinion to you in the email.
I'm not asking for your opinion, I want my piece of paper back.
I have a motion, can I have a second to close?
I have a picture of it, by the way.
All in favor of adjourned?
Who made the motion to adjourn? Zaversa, in a second?
I made a second.
I motioned.
All in favor?